We have a quorum. I will bring the December 18th date of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. The agenda before you has approval of the summary minutes for December 4th meeting. It's the first item. Is there any comment or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the meetings in the December 4th meeting.
Second.
Any more conversation about that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the public hearing items. Item 2A of application Z-12-23 filed by Quail Meadows, Staff Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we'll give, I think Mr. Story indicated the last time this came up at the meeting on the 20th that he was going to excuse himself due to a relationship with Mr. Byquist, the applicant. So, he will excuse himself from items 2A and B. These are both filed by Stan Byquist, the president of Quail Meadows Estates, Inc., and actually, the entire focus of today's meeting is on Block 8 of Quail Meadows Estates addition. And so, John conveniently has the aerial photo and now the map up of the area in Quail Meadows Estates. This block right here is Block 8, and back in 2005, that was final platted into one lot and block, and at the time, was requested for Plan C1 zoning. And the idea at the time was that that would serve as a potential buffer lot between more intensive commercial and industrial development south of Schilling Road and single-family to the north. Mr. Byquist has filed this application because, as the owner, he's now seen the value and marketability of the, at least the northeast corner of this property differently than it was viewed in 2005 originally. So, this application came before you on the 20th. As a public hearing item, it was continued to today's meeting because at the meeting on the 20th, we did not have a companion final plat drawing. But, the request is to take this area here inside this box and plat seven individual lots for single-family residential development. Those lots would be essentially a mirror image of the lots to the north on the north side of Eileen Lane. And what we pointed out and what was the question at the last meeting is if you go in and carve out this 132-foot deep section here, it calls into question to make sure that you've got a viable plan for this area and this area over here. So, John, if you could put up the summary of the R1 zoning requirements and how it relates to this. What Mr. Byquist is applying for is R1 zoning for these, this area and seven proposed lots. The minimum setback would be 25 feet from Eileen, seven and a half feet on the side, and 25 feet on the rear. We would have a minimum area of 6,000 square feet. He's proposing lots that are roughly 78 feet wide and 132 feet deep, and so, they far exceed the minimum lot size. And, of course, we've indicated before, there's no minimum house size. All we're looking at doing is the lot size and setback requirements. So, we are not in any mapped floodplain here. We have utilities in place except for electricity on Eileen Lane, and the applicant believes that the current C1 zoning inhibits the development potential of this property, that it's more suitable and marketable for single-family home construction. If you've driven the area, you can judge for yourself whether you think the putting single-family on this side would be compatible with what's on the north side of Eileen Lane. But, basically, if you look at it, it's a mirror image of that, and neighbors that we've had contact with don't seem to find it objectionable. The water and sewer is in place to serve development here. Stormwater has been addressed. Essentially, the concept in Quail Meadows Estates was many of our subdivisions have their own detention pond. This subdivision's detention pond is the Schilling Road ditch, and because of that, the developer pays basically a fee for the right to send and store water in that ditch. The future land use plan shows this as suburban residential for this particular subdivision, and the density that we're talking about here is right at four units acre, which does fit the low-density suburban residential classification. So, our recommendation at the meeting on the 20th was to table this to allow the plat to be joined with it, and our recommendation at this time would be to approve the applicant's rezoning request subject to satisfactory completion of the replating process. And, we've identified the reasons or findings for that on page five of your report, which is that the, we have an existing paved street and public utilities. The location and physical attributes of the property are conducive to single-family development without any additional improvements. It's a logical extension of the existing residential pattern, and the zoning is consistent with suburban residential-type development. So, as far as the item 2A, the request is to go from PC1 to R1 on this property right here. And with that, I'd be open to any questions about the zoning aspect of this.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? There being none, I'll open it up to the applicant. Would the applicant like to address us on this item?
Stan Byquist, 2601 South Ohio. First of all, I want to thank you for your time, and I want to thank the staff for the report. I agree with the report and hope that you would pass this, and so, we can develop some single-family lots. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
Stan, on electricity, will you be coming in, are they putting them in the front for this one, or are you coming in the rear?
They'll be on the, it'll be the south property line. They'll be in the rear. We're coming in off the...
They're going to come like this?
Dean, actually, we're coming in down off the southwest corner.
Down here?
Yep, and we're going to run right straight up there, and then to the...
Well, I will, I'll share with you the comment I had from Mr. Zirker at Westar, and one of the items that they're requesting is a 10-foot easement right here, so they can run electric like that. So, we may want to have a matching of notes with them, but that's, that's one of their request items, is that they were envisioning coming across here, down here, and with transformers in the rear along there.
I guess that's possible. I've spoken to two different people there, and maybe we're getting two different stories, but I do have a meeting with them tomorrow, so I'm sure we'll get this ironed out.
But, the transformer boxes will be in the rear, not in the front yard.
Yeah, they will be in the rear.
Any other questions, Mr. Byquist?
Thank you.
This is a public item. Is there any comment from the public? We'll open the floor. There being none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioners, I'd ask you if there's any disagreement with the findings and recommendations put forward by the staff. Other comments or questions to the staff? If we're in agreement, then I guess we're ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve Z-12-23 as presented, along with the staff recommendations and staff and findings, one through four.
Third, second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries. Number 2B, application PO43B, also Quail Meadows, the staff report.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the rezoning that you just considered. This will have a few more technical items that we'll want to get some input from Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Byquist engineer, and also from Mr. Stack, the city engineer. Back in February 2005, the planning commission approved the original plat of the Quail Meadows Estates area that John had up a little earlier with the red box around the area that we're talking about today. The original layout had 124 single-family building lots, 11 townhome or duplex lots over on Jack Circle, and had two C1 zone lots. This lot is gone because it's been absorbed into this corner lot here, so this is no longer a standalone C1 zone lot. This is still here. This is a townhome area over on Jack Circle. All the rest of this is single-family lots. You can see the conditions of approval that the planning commission incorporated. One of the biggest items that was an item of discussion at the time, of course, had to do with drainage and rear yard drainage. And, what occurred in the original requirements was that the use of concrete ribbons or concrete drainage swales in the rear yard areas to carry runoff, these are very long blocks, and the flumes were installed to carry runoff from the rear yard areas down to the respective side streets, so it could get into the streets and drain off to the south. And, we've had four development phases so far. We have, there is no magic bullet for rear yard drainage, as we have learned. There have been cases of fences and other obstructions, even with the concrete drainage flumes. Mr. Byquist or Mr. Malinowski may want to address this. There have been four phases. There have been design plans approved for Phase 5, which I believe is up in this area, but Mr. Byquist can confirm that. This, the development on Eileen would be essentially Phase 6 of this development. And, as we noted, Mr. Byquist perceives there's a market need for additional single-family lots in this subdivision, and to accomplish that, he's proposing a change to the plating arrangement that would create lots here, that would mirror the lots on the north side. And, as we mentioned, all the public utilities are in place. It's our understanding that electricity, AT&amp;T, and Cox Cable would utilize the rear yard easement. We did want to emphasize, for the benefit of Mr. Byquist and his engineer, is that there are no sewer taps or water taps in place on Eileen for these lots. So, when the water and sewer is installed in a street here like Eileen, they'll put taps in for each of these lots. Well, since these lots didn't exist at the time, there's no individual taps in those water sewer lines for these lots, so those would have to be put in by the developer as individual sites develop. We pointed out that when you do have a meeting of the drainage use in the rear yard and the utility use in the backyard, it's important to separate the two. So, in the case of having a concrete drainage flume and boxes for transformers, Westar doesn't want to zig back and forth. They want to be on one side of the flume, and usually, on the inside if possible. So, one of the things that will be an item of discussion here is what is the rear yard drainage solution for these seven lots. So, as we pointed out, the remainder of this subdivision has those flumes. The applicant has indicated to us that his preference would be to do something similar that was done on Wildcat Circle, and that is to, instead of having rear yard drainage, to basically tip or crown the lot so that they drain from back to front, and so, the entire runoff from the lot runs back towards the street as opposed to having a portion go to the rear and get trapped. There was a lot grading plan that was very conceptual. John, I think we have that in the packet, and you'll have to blow it up for us. Again, this was conceptual and furnished to planning and engineering staffs, but what this depicts is using a high point back here at the rear of the lot and sending the water back. And, in order for that to work, you need sufficient slope that the water will drain through grass or rougher areas and any encroachments in the side yard, and you need to make sure that whatever happens on the backside matches up to that as well. So, it's hard to pick up these numbers, but for instance, this is elevation 1244, and this is elevation 12428, so it's showing a slope from back to front. That would be one of the discussion items. We have, the other thing about this application, when you're dealing with a plat like this, is that this easement is essentially half an easement. There's a twin that goes on the other side of it. This is a half easement, so there would need to be a twin on the other side of it. And, so, to get our full 20 feet, we would have to have easements dedicated outside the plat. And, the reason that deciding whether flumes are required or not required is obviously, if this is just open grassy area, then Westar and Cox Cable and AT&amp;T have pretty well have a free run in terms of installation. But, if one of these sides is chosen for a concrete drainage ribbon, then you've got to pick a side for drainage and pick a side for utilities, and that is why that is important. So, Mr. Byquist is aware that in this area, there's a number of cost recovery or impact fees, and the way that's been handled is as building permits are applied for, for each development segment, then the fees are calculated and collected before permits are issued. So, we have a cost recovery for Schilling Road and the Schilling Road ditch, and a 12-inch water line that was installed on Schilling, and then also, there's a park fee that is collected. So, as we look at the plat, we have recommended three conditions on page six of your report. One is obligating the owner to dedicate the west half and the south half of this separately so that we get the full 20 feet to work with there, that either a concrete drainage ribbon be installed back here, or that an alternative lot grading plan be approved by the city engineer. And, the third item was that all applicable impact fees be paid prior to issuance of a building permit on any of these lots, and that's been standard practice for Mr. Byquist at each development phase. I did want to mention, Mr. Perney brought it up at the last meeting. I'm bringing it up again, that if, explaining again, that when you plat a property and you take this and you record it, when you record this plat, these automatically become easements, because this area here is outside of that, those easements have to be dedicated separately. If you could pan over to show a little bit more of the west, John. This is related to item three on your agenda, which is the property that Mr. Simpson has an option to purchase. And, as we explained in this report and have explained to Mr. Byquist, there are two options for that. And, one option would be to have lots one through seven, plus replating this into a lot eight. And, the primary advantages of that is that if you plat this into lot eight, then the easement that Westar is requesting here, this twin easement here, the easement that's discussed for coming down all the way to Schilling with the water line, those would all be dedicated by the plat. If this is left out of that, then we're going back and we're trying to get all of these dedicated individually, which can be done, but it's a lot simpler to show and dedicate easements on a plat than it is to go back and get them individually. And, given where we are timing-wise with these two projects, at least, we wanted to lay out the option or the possibility that this could be seven lots plus an eighth, and then that would leave us with this piece here, which is likely to be replatted separately in the future. But, we did want to explain that in order to carve this out as a separate parcel, there would have to be a lot-split survey. That lot-split survey would not go to the planning commission or city commission, and therefore, it wouldn't have any involvement with easements. So, I think the two decision points on the replat is, is there any interest or value gained by making this the eighth lot of the replat? And, then, the second thing would be the rear yard drainage. And, I might refer it over to Mr. Stack and let him provide any comments that engineering department has regarding their experience with rear yard drainage, rear yard drainage complaints, or how well the flume works versus the grading plan.
Thanks, Dean. In the past, I guess, this subdivision has had the concrete flumes. Is that correct?
Yes. This, Mr. Byquist was the guinea pig for the first experiment with the concrete drainage ribbons. The other subdivision that has concrete drainage ribbons is Golden Eagle Estates, number four, which is over by Falcon View and Huntington and Wayne in that vicinity.
Okay. And, it seems like that, as it's like Dean talked about earlier, that has challenges associated with people still build over the top of them, or they, you know, put a fence over them, or they, you know, wash their yard clippings out in them, because it's a nice, clean place to do it. So, there are inherent issues with any kind of rear yard drainage. So, I don't know if those concrete ribbons solve the issue, but in the case of the really flat areas of Salina, which this is one of them, it at least, kind of almost guarantees that there will be a grade hit. The backyard will have to end up at the grade of that swell. The yard, the developer, the builder will have to know, what's this here for? It's hard to cover them up, because they're there. So, it does give us a certain element of, I guess, we don't have to, enforcement isn't as big of a challenge. The swell is there, the concrete ribbon is there, and it, when it's put in, it drains. So, that is the, that is the good thing about them. As far as the grading plan they proposed, I mean, that could work. It's a, the problem is, it's pretty flat. It's 1% slopes, basically from, John, if you could go back to that drawing that shows the elevations. Okay. Basically, that drawing there shows the backyard sloping from back to front, which would be south to north, at 1%. 1% is really flat, and it doesn't take a lot to have a problem with 1% or back something up at 1% slope. It also slopes from west to east at 1%, I believe is what it looks like, anyway, approximately. So, you know, okay, so if it doesn't flow from front to back, well, it might flow from west to east. You know, it could go either way. Well, it just doesn't take a lot to cause that not to work. And, so, you know, some guy builds in the middle, person builds in the middle, and they build it too high, and then guy next to them tries to build it, doesn't flow, and it gets to be a challenge. So, there's no concrete to hit. There's no grades to hit. So, the inherent challenge with that would be, how are we going to enforce it? How's it going to get done? It can work, but it seems like the history in our city has been very flat, and if it's a concern of the planning commissioners and the property owners, the concrete ribbon seems to be the best, best of all the solutions to deal with that. It's definitely costs, I guess, can cost more, but it's a, it is something that seems to at least work. But, it's up to, you know, I guess, you all, if that's, I mean, it can work any way. You can grade something to work. It's just a lot more enforceability, and we have to have different assurances. Maybe a survey would do it, or some kind of a, some kind of a way to check the grades, and I'm not sure how that would work. So, Dean, is that a fair background?
Yeah, we may want to defer to Mr. Nelson there as well. He has reviewed some of the grading plans that have been done. The place where this was attempted and approved by the planning commission before is on Wildcat Circle, where essentially, what you have on Wildcat Circle is that you have two lots. It's, they face Wildcat Circle, and the crown are high points in the middle where the two rear lot lines meet, and the lots are supposed to be sloped so that the whole backyard drains to the front. I believe that maybe, Mr. Nelson, we've gotten a little more detail on those grading plans than what we've been provided here by Mr. Malinowski.
That would be true, Mr. Andrew. The drainage plan that was approved for Block 2 of Golden Eagle, number five, did have a back-to-front drainage requirement, but it also had a requirement to keep a, essentially, a V trough through the property lines on both sides of the homes to be open, and restricted the building of accessory buildings, driveways, and other obstructions, so that the path of travel from back to front was such that it was unrestricted. There was a top elevation set at the rear, a top elevation at the curb, and then there was a requirement for the floor elevation to be within a very narrow range that the house had to be built at. So, we didn't run into, well, the guy next to me built at this level, and I want to be higher than him, and then the next guy, we escalated into ever higher elevations as we go up and down the block. So, that was our experience with Golden Eagle, number five, and it's still a work in progress.
One of the issues we've had is that it's been so exceptionally dry, that we haven't had a lot of experience with seeing how the drainage works in Wildcat Circle, because we haven't had a lot of precipitation events to really test it. But, what Mr. Nelson's referring to is that the plan for Wildcat Circle basically had a plan where the low point for these lots would be along the common lot line here, so that there was a plan to ensure that there was kind of a trough here, so that the backwater could get through the common lot line at those places. So, it's not to say that a grading plan could not work. I think we're just saying that the plan that's here in front of you today that staff has reviewed is not have as much detail to it in terms of making, providing information to contractors to follow it as what was required in Golden Eagle, number five, or Wildcat Circle.
Mr. Andrew, I would also note that as each time the property passes hands ownership, and you get further and further away from the original understanding of what that drainage arrangement is, first from the developer, then to the contractor, the first house owner, and subsequent house owners, when there's not that physical barrier, such as the ribbon in the backyard, you know, that idea of the drainage requirement is easily lost.
Wayne, what's the net effect of this drainage plan here? In other words, I know that we've talked about in the past, if we build up one place, we essentially also raise the flood. And, I know this, these seven lots aren't going to, you know, appreciably affect our water levels anywhere, but what would be the net effect of this? Are the fronts scooped out, and then that moved to the back, or has new material moved in and the whole thing raised?
Well, I imagine there's a couple of ways to go about that, and I would probably defer that to Sam and Stan, but I would imagine that the, there would be some amount of material brought in from another source and built on to the back end of the lots. Is that a fair assessment, Sam?
So, yeah, we're doing our best to characterize what we perceive as their proposal, but you would best hear...
would best hear what Mr. Byquist's vision is for these seven lots, and also allow Mr. Malinowski to expand on his grading plan. But that, those were the two technical issues that we identified for the planning commission is what is the preferred rear yard drainage solution, one, and two, should the property to the west, that is the subject of item three, is there a good reason to include that within the replat as an eighth lot, just to address the easement issues and to make this a little bit less of a jigsaw puzzle with multiple pieces? So if you have no other questions, and staff, it'd probably be appropriate to hear from the applicants.
If there are no more questions, and staff, applicant, would you like to tell us your perspective?
Thank you.
Stan Byquist, 2601 South Ohio. Again, thanks for hearing this. I guess the first thing I'll address, and Sam will probably have to help me out a little bit, is we would like to go with the lot drainage plan rather than the ribbon system. There are several reasons. The first one is strictly finances. That ribbon, on the latest bid I got, is about $2,000 a lot. In addition, every home, existing home in Quail Meadow has a basement. So here you go, dig in a basement, the full size of the house, and you've got all this dirt, and then the contractors have to haul it off. So it could be put to use right on each lot, rather than an additional expense for the builders to haul it off. So I don't anticipate any dirt being brought in. I think probably in the end, we may still have to haul some off. But to go one step further, and I don't know if anybody's driven by the site, but I've already taken, and I can't tell you how many dump truck loads of dirt, and run down that south property line. My intent is to do a berm higher than whatever the agreed elevation is between Sam and his engineering firm and the city's engineering department. My intent is to build a berm a little higher, maybe a foot, foot and a half higher than whatever that requirement is. And then, when the builders come back there to grade, they're actually, there's going to be a berm very similar to what was done at Stone Lake along Ohio. That's my goal here, is to put a berm across the back. The builders will come and meet the berm, still going to be that much higher than that back lot level, and then on top of that will be the electric transformers. So that's my overall plan. In addition, to the south of there, I envision, it's going to take a little time to engineer this, but I envision putting a street in, running to the west, and a cul-de-sac, now Dean's got it right there in a cul-de-sac, and then backing more lots up to these lots, and backing lots up to Schilling, and Sam has already worked on our elevations and drainage. That will all, those two new sets of lots will all drain to the street. The street then drains east to the collection system we already have installed. So that's, that's the master plan, I guess. I would hope that my engineer and the city's engineer and you would agree that we can, we can do this. And basically, as far as the drawings and that, it'll probably be a mirror of what happened over in Wildcat Circle, except for me going one step further and putting a berm back there, that they, you know, it's going to stick up higher than their grade. And I guess that's, that's it. Other than on the easements, I don't have a problem in making the-
A lot eight.
The lot eight end of plat. It just takes a little time, but I don't, I think we have a little time right now because we've got to work through some drainage issues, so I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, the only item that would not address would be the twin right here, and then, as we'll discuss in the next item, Mr. Byquist is planning to construct a water line through here, and this will provide an easement for half of it, and we'll need the other half through here. But where we are timing-wise, I don't think it would be difficult to create a lot for Mr. Simpson through this replat process and avoid the separate lot split and get the easements done via the plating method, but the decision lies with Mr. Byquist and with the planning commission.
Stan, if you did incorporate that in, and for some reason, he didn't exercise his option, what does that leave you with, then? Would you have to replat it again for?
I think that probably is a fair statement. Dean's a lot more expert at plating than I am, but I think that's probably-
That is the downside doing it, is that it, the reason to do it is because you're locked into the plan that Mr. Simpson has with this 185, or 180.5-foot configuration. So if, if for some reason that didn't come about, then you'd be, you'd be locked into that configuration. But you may do that to yourself anyway. If you replat this into individual lots here, then your, this piece is going to be remaining out there. It's just a matter of how it gets packaged.
Probably in looking, and Todd, thanks for the question, probably in looking at the overall plan, if something did go astray, it would probably be better if that wasn't platted.
It's still going to be platted, but what it would be platted as would still be part of the original block eight of Quail Meadows Estates addition, and it's still going to be zoned, planned C1, because the only thing that we're rezoning at this time is these seven lots. So this, this is going to look just like it does for the time being. If this is not included in the plat, then there'll have to be a separate lot-split survey recorded for this, but the difference between a lot-split survey and a plat is that a plat involves a dedication of easements, and a lot-split survey means that you'd have to go through and get the easements individually, one by one. So if there's any uncertainty about this being developed and purchased in that configuration, then it is best to leave it out.
Does, if the proposal is to put any type of multifamily on the eighth lot, if that's what was going to be done, does that then require multifamily rezoning of lot eight as well, then, or does it fit within the C1?
What you'll have on item three following this is a application for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of multifamily, but it would keep the underlying zoning the same. So if, if for some reason that were approved but never built, this, this piece here is going to retain its, its planned C1 zoning until somebody tries to zone it differently. But apartments are something you can do conditionally in C1.
I guess my question is, what do you want to do?
That's a good question.
I'm not here to design it for you. What do you want us to?
I guess I would, I would rather not plat lot eight. I mean, our intent is, and we'll follow up with this on the next item, our intent is to do the senior complex, but if something were to happen, and this was platted, I am kind of locked in, because if, if this senior complex were not to happen, and that street that was going to end in a cul-de-sac is going to run straight on through and connect to the existing Jack Circle, so that could get complicated if something went astray here.
That would be a reason not to include it, which is why we're suggesting it as an option, but not, certainly not required.
Then I guess my wish would be to not include it, and then let me get the needed easements through the survey documentation.
So we should address the application as it is with the stack, staff recommendations, and allowing the alternative grading plan to be worked out between your engineer and the city engineer?
Correct.
Rather than that swell or concrete thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we'd like to work out the grading plan.
So the way that condition two is worded is it's not locking anybody into anything, it's allowing an alternate plan to be presented if his engineer and the city engineer can agree on it.
Good with that? Other questions?
I just, sorry, a couple more. One just pertains to the future plat on there. And this will go to Dan, can he actually put a cul, I mean, is future plan, can you have one longer than 200 feet for a cul-de-sac without a secondary exit? Is that possible in cities?
600.
About 600?
600.
Perfect, good. And then my last comment will be still on the drainage, because that's where we kind of started on this. Pretty familiar with a lot of the drainage in building in Wildcat. And I'll refer this to Wayne possibly on, when we get a final over there, I don't believe anybody has ever came over and done any type of survey or anything to make sure that we're within anything that's there, but I don't believe in our building process, we've ever disrupted any dirt further back than 10 feet from a basement, so I don't really see that being a problem, but what is the follow-up for that on the certificate of occupancy?
What we get, Mr. Welsh, is a certificate of elevation of the height of the main floor in that particular building. So we're assuming that if the height of the, and that's the requirement, that that was part of the drainage agreement, was that the finished final floor of the main floor of any of the homes in block two was to be within a range of, I think it was one foot plus or minus. So there was an upper and a lower limit set, and it had to be set somewhere in that range.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen a problem over there, and like you said, we haven't had a whole lot of rain, but I haven't seen anybody disrupting anything in the back where the fences are, so there still is a positive grade towards the front. The flumes, I have seen problems in the past where, once somebody does wash something out into that, and there becomes a dirt pileup in that flume, it stops, you know, I don't know who's supposed to be maintaining those, but it does give the final grade, as you said, Mr. Stack. It does give a thing, an understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, this adds more administrative work for us, but if you, if you require an elevation certificate and some kind of, what would it be? It'd be basically a grading plan. Sam would have put together a grading plan, and they'd have to certify at the end that it met it. Well, at least, at least that would be helpful for us, but Wayne's point is correct, you know, somebody builds it 30 years from now and messes it up, I guess that's different, but at least it would be helpful if we could have some kind of, like, certificate of elevation or certificate of final survey or certificate of grading to hit so that it is, it is done correctly.
I'm wondering if the utility pads in the back couldn't be set at a certain elevation, and then the grade is set to that, that would keep that grade, just as you had mentioned before. If you set those, if you had Westar set those at a certain elevation, and that's 12, 44, you've got 44 now and 42 to the front, but is 44 enough, then, Dan, to, if you set, if you set those pads, at what elevation would you need? What do you approve of the drainage? If you're saying there's only a one, a one-foot drop now, what would be adequate?
Well, 2% is what we've, which is hard in Slina, so it's almost laughable, isn't it? That's pretty funny, isn't it, Sam? It's, you just don't get 2% in Slina very well, but 2% in a lot of cities, that's kind of their minimum grade, because you can get water to kind of run that way. It's still a little bit of a bog, it's still a little bit of a soupy area, but it does flow. And not a lot, but it's just, 1% is just really flat, and it doesn't take grass clippings to stop that up. So even if you use this grading plan 1%, it may still not come out of the back corner of the yard, but, you know, that's, that's where 90% of Slina is. I mean, most, most yard plans didn't have a concrete flume in the back to hit, so you deal with it and it goes away, but it's the kind of stuff that we either get calls, or you get calls, or why the heck did we approve that? I don't, you know, that's the kind of stuff that if, if we're okay with that, it's, water's a common enemy to everybody, so it's just the way it goes. And this, as long as they grade it to this initially, it will be able to flow, it's in some fashion, but it's just helpful to have some kind of parameters in the, maybe in the minutes or in some kind of detail here that we can use to enforce. I mean, Stan knows what he's doing, and he's done it before, Sam has as well, so it's, whatever we need, whatever we could utilize to elevation certificates or grading plans to at least get it right the first time would be helpful. It's a long answer.
Stan?
I can maybe make a little comment, not to speak for Westar, but usually Westar requires on the pad elevations to be about a foot and a half above grade, so if that's grade, let's say those numbers are grade, are future grade, then the transformers would be probably a foot and a half taller than that, and my intent is to make the entire berm that height. In other words, transformers all be in one line with that berm back there, and then the yards are sloped to the, sloped to the berm. And we already have in all, in all the covenants out there, we already have elevation levels in each phase where they have to, the elevation of the actual floor on the house, so that's pretty easy to do what they've done over there in Wildcat, because we already have that requirement. Ours is actually about, we let them, we let them run about a foot and a half variance to give, but if it drops to a foot, that's no problem.
We can check what Golden Eagle was. I don't know if it was 1% or 2%. We're not sure right now, so we can see, if it's 1%, then you've approved that before. It's hard to make Stan do 2%, but 2% definitely flows better than 1%. So it is a, just a, we have to at least throw that out there. And I don't know if 2% makes you haul in a whole bunch more dirt or not, I don't know. If you have, if you have a surplus, then maybe it wouldn't be a problem, but those grades are pretty flat currently, as currently shown.
Which, as you mentioned, also Slina's flat.
Right.
So with that, I hope you'll approve this with these conditions, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Did we need any comments from your engineer, or do you have anything that you want us to know? At this point, I'm hearing the plan is you and the engineering staff will work out that grade.
Yeah, I'm Sam Malinowski with Cook Flat and Strobel Engineers, and be happy to answer any questions. Like Stan said, with his future cul-de-sac, we've got everything where it'll drain to the cul-de-sacs. This is kind of like one piece of the big puzzle. I've worked with Roger, kind of some preliminary grades on his stuff, so everything will drain somewhere, but, you know, as Dan says, 1% is, 2% is obviously better than 1%, but it'll, it'll work, I mean, if it's put in for the plant.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I guess I would, I just want to be a little clear, Stan, about what you're saying. If I heard what you just said, you said you would be okay with this, with staff recommendations as they are listed here. Did I hear you correctly?
No, we got-
I think he's asking for a ribbon there. I don't think he wants the ribbon.
That's my question.
Well, what, you know, what, saying that is a ribbon will be used or allows the alternative of a grading plan that is acceptable to the city engineer, so it allows the option that-
So the or gives you that option, Dean?
The or gives him the option to say, I would like to exercise the option, and then it puts the burden on him and Mr. Malinowski to come up with an alternative lot grading plan-
Okay.
-that the city engineer- plan that, that the city engineer will accept.
Yeah, I just want to be sure I understood that correctly.
And it gives them that, gives them that latitude.
Right.
And if they can't come up with an alternate plan, then we're back to the ribbon.
Yep.
Is there, this being a publicist item, we'll open this to the floor, is there anyone that would like to comment on this item from the public? There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, are you in agreement with the staff's recommendations, and how do you feel about this item? Is there a motion or further comment?
I would move that, subject to the agreement of the, of Mr. Byquist, that we approve application PO43B, requesting approval of replat portion of block eight, Quail Meadows Estates.
I'd second that. Been moved and seconded, is there further comment or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item carries.
Just for clarification, that is a seven lot replat that just includes the seven residential individual lots, and does not make any inclusion of the eighth lot, so.
Thank you. Number three, application CU12-8 filed by Roger Simpson, staff report on this conditional use permit.
Yes, as we described here, block eight, when it was originally platted and zoned in 2005, was zoned Plan C1 for restricted business, and the permitted uses in Plan C1 include things such as business and professional offices and churches, and as a secondary use through a conditional use permit, multifamily residential development. So when Mr. Byquist laid this plat out originally, the thought was that this area here would serve as a buffer zone between, you've got Sunflower Bank, Kennedy &amp; Co., and other potential commercial uses there, this would be the buffer zone between those and the single family to the north, and so office buildings, or a church, or apartment buildings that, that needed the land area there and the frontage on, on Schilling were all ideas that, that could come about at that time. As you've seen, the, Mr. Byquist perceives the, the market now being stronger for single family, and has, has carved that out, but on the west, 108, 5.5 feet, Mr. Simpson has an option to purchase that portion, he has submitted an application for approval of a conditional use permit and site plan to allow construction of four, four-unit apartment buildings, and so the, the development that we're talking about would essentially be four, fourplexes in a row, and so to get your bearings, this is Kaywood Drive, which runs north from Schilling, this is Schilling Road on the right, this is Eileen Lane, and this is the row of four buildings, so lots that we were just discussing are off to the east here on the south side of Eileen Lane. And so multifamily dwellings are allowed as a conditional use, and C1 is an alternative to office development. Each of these four-unit apartment buildings would contain approximately 3990 square feet. The plan is that they would be single-story slab-on-grade buildings with no basement, the plan is they would be residential in appearance with pitched roof, heritage shingles, the total height would be about 26 feet. I'll let Mr. Simpson expand on this, because I understand he used these materials over on the Eagle Crest Twin Homes that are just to the north of Magnolia Road, but the plan would be to use a earth-toned steel siding that would have a woodgrain look, and then there would be brick wainscoting around the base. In addition, there would be some carports on the east side, they would be designed to match the buildings, and would have brick support posts, and then the applicant is proposing to enclose the entire complex with a black powder-coated steel fence, which would also have brick posts. The applicant has indicated that he is targeting this housing complex for seniors age 55 and up, and what we've chosen to do as a staff is just view that as a marketing decision, and we've got a i- item up there that kind of describes to you how the, the Fair Housing Act and housing for older persons work, that many of our elderly housing projects in Salina are either HUD-funded, or they have tax credits, which limit them to elderly populations, but this is a privately funded project here, so we're just characterizing this as multifamily apartments, and it will be up to Mr. Simpson to decide who can, how it will be limited or marketed, but the, it was reviewed as if it were any other multifamily apartment complex. So your role in this application is to determine whether the change in use from a C1 vacant lot to 16 multifamily dwellings comprising, or composed in four buildings would have any negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and to look at the applicant's building location, design, and site layout, and decide whether that would be compatible with the existing development pattern and use of adjacent properties. So we have summarized for you on page four and five how this fits within the parameters of the R3 district regulations. We're talking about 16 dwelling units on this property total, so our, we have nearly two acres, so our density is eight units an acre, which we would characterize as, as medium density, not high density, eight units per acre would be about double the four units per acre that Mr. Byquist is planning to the east. In terms of lot area, there would be 5,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, which is greater again than what you'd have with higher-density apartments. To give you an idea, the chapel ridge apartments by the mall, there's about 22 units per acre of land area there, this is eight units per acre, so this is much lower density or intensity than, than some of our apartment complexes. We've got 185 feet of frontage on Eileen and, and Schilling. In terms of setbacks, we're proposing 30 feet from Eileen, 30 feet from Kaywood, and 50 feet from Schilling, which exceeds minimum requirements. In R3, you can actually build a structure up to 75 feet in height, and that's actually to accommodate things like Johnstown Towers or Oakdale Plaza, which are, are more high-rises, but we're talking about 26 feet here, which is comparable to a, a modest two-story home. We're talking about 19% of the lot being covered with buildings, and the plan provides a total of 41 surface parking spaces, and they have incorporated buffers in. John, if you could scroll out, there, there's a buffer strip here, which would provide an opportunity for landscape buffering between this parking area and future homes there, there would be a landscape buffer here related to the future, or the existing homes on Eileen Lane, and then a, a buffer along this, this parking lot area here. So, uh, one of the things you have to consider is, is the welfare and convenience of the public, or the influence on that. The, the developer and the applicant believe there is a market for multifamily housing, particularly senior housing, and that, that market is greater than for office development, and the staff would certainly agree that there is a demonstrated need for additional multifamily housing in the community. One thing we would, we have pointed out as, as a staff, that we have four buildings here being targeted for seniors, at least in Mr. Simpson's indication, and we just wanted to point out that at, at this time, we did not detect any plan for providing a storm shelter or safe rooms for the residents, so we did want to make clear that we're talking about slab-on-grade, no basements, and we did not find a, a place proposed for a complex storm shelter or safe rooms within the units, but when we're talking about the welfare of the public, that, that's something that at least should be taken into account. The applicant believes that the four buildings will be house-like in appearance, and again, the, the comprehensive plan, when Quail Meadows Estates was proposed, called for buffer uses on the north side of Schilling, and the construction of these units that would, would be designed to blend in with existing housing, that staff believes that this could be viewed as an appropriate buffer used between Schilling Road and, and single family to the north. And you can judge for yourselves, but we believe that the applicant has made an effort to, to blend this in with the area in the vicinity, has put parking on the east side to help screen that from view, and the design and scale and, and density proposed doesn't appear to staff that it would dominate or overwhelm the neighborhood. We've determined that with 16 units, 32 spaces at a minimum would need to be provided, and there's 41 provided, which would certainly allow for guests and visitors. The access to the site would be from a single driveway on Eileen Lane, and then we pointed out the opportunities for buffer strips between the parking area and the neighboring properties. The Director of Utilities and Fire Department have looked at this, and they believe the existing water volume and the existing fire hydrant locations are in place to meet the needs of, of multifamily construction here. Did want to point out that Mr. Byquist, partially to make it easier for this development, and partially to facilitate his plan for the cul-de-sac to the south, is proposing to install a six-inch water line that would run in an easement along here, it would tie the 12-inch line in Schilling to here, it, it's our understanding that that would make it easier for Mr. Simpson to tie these units back to a water supply line, and otherwise he'd have to bore across Kaywood Drive to get water service for each of those buildings. There's existing sewer in place in Eileen Lane, the same one that would serve Mr. Byquist's seven lots. The, the drainage items would be the same, this site would primarily be graded to drain to this parking area, runoff would come out here and, uh, then go to inlets here in the intersection, there's a big pipe that carries the runoff down to the, the Schilling Road ditch, and so, again, Kaywood and Eileen are both local streets, but it's, it's not like this would be running traffic through an entire neighborhood or subdivision, the access points is primarily going to be Schilling to Kaywood to this driveway, and we're only talking about 16 units. So we, we looked at the trip generation for 16 apartment units, it'd be about 128 vehicle trips today, a day, but if you had full build-out of all the single-family homes on Eileen Lane, those would generate 180 vehicle trips today, so it's not like this is going to be overwhelming the, the area with, with trips or, or traffic. So as you look at this plan, you, you can consider whether you believe Eileen Lane is the most suitable location for driveway access. As we indicated, the density for this would be eight units per acre, the comprehensive plan shows this as appropriate for suburban, suburban residential-type development, and it identifies townhomes and apartments at four to 10 units per acre as an appropriate secondary use, it suggests that multifamily be at the edges of defined neighborhoods along arterial streets, and be a, a transition use, and it suggests that buildings, access points, and parking areas have a similar relationship to the streetscape as primary single-family uses, and should be of a similar scale. So as you look at this, Schilling is an arterial street, this is at the edge, helps define the edge of the neighborhood, so this plan and this location would be in conformance with the suburban residential designation in the plan. You can decide in your judgment whether you think the design complements and enhances the existing character, but the size, the buildings, their height is, is not dramatically out of proportion with the neighborhood. We've highlighted there, again, the cost recovery and impact fees that would be associated with this development. Our findings are that the 16-unit apartment complex, as proposed, complies with all the R3 district requirements, and also with landscape and off-street parking requirements. If you have multifamily housing units here, it will add to the housing choices within the community. We don't perceive that this would cause substantial injury to the value of other property, or that it would overwhelm the surrounding neighborhood. Adequate off-street parking is provided, adequate utilities and drainage infrastructure is in place, adequate access is provided on Eileen Lane, and it, it's not out of proportion, and it is directly adjacent to an arterial street, and this is an allowable secondary use in the suburban residential land use area, and the, the plan and the location meets the criteria for secondary uses in the comprehensive plan. So your options today would be to approve the conditional use permit and site plan and building plans as submitted, if you agree with staff's findings. You could approve the conditional use permit, subject to any revisions you think need to be made to the plan, or the architectural elevations of the buildings. You could postpone consideration of this request if you think you need additional information to reach a decision, or you could deny the application if you don't think findings can be made to support this application. So our, our recommendation is approval of the application and plan, subject to the conditions that we identified on page 12, and that would be inclusion of either in the replat, as we mentioned before, or as a separate approved and recorded lot split, which is what Mr. Byquist has indicated his preference to be. If we don't do a replat, then all the needed utility easements will need to be dedicated by separate instrument, that development of the site will be required to conform with the site plan, parking plan, and elevations that you reviewed today, and that a detailed planning plan would be submitted for those landscape buffer areas, and that all applicable impact fees be paid prior to issuance of a building permit. And again, the, the plan for, for drainage here is to, is to get it to the, primarily to the parking area, drain out to Eileen Lane, and then over to storm sewers in the Eileen-Kaywood intersection. And so if you have additional questions about drainage, I would defer those to the engineering staff or Mr. Malinowski, but I'd be open to any other questions about the application.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions? May we hear from the applicant?
Roger Simpson, 926 East Beloit.
Thank you, Roger. And the staff had recommendations, are you comfortable with the five recommendations that go along with this?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Simpson?
Not necessarily for Mr. Simpson, but Stan, do you have any covenants or restrictions on the other units as far as roof pitches or anything that were installed by the houses?
Uh, no.
In the covenants or restrictions?
We've, we've never had any, any roof, roof pitch or shingle type.
Okay.
Roger intends to put a heritage type on it. Right, we're, far as roof, shingle, we're trying, going with a 30-year heritage, so we're trying to match the existing homes.
Is that a 412 you did over on?
These are five. Katie Court was a, a 512.
It is a 512?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you're proposing here, 512?
Yes, yes. This actually has a higher height on it because of the longer span, so the roof does look higher than an actual 512 as it would over on Katie Court, just due to the span of the building.
Only reason I ask is just try to keep it all, I mean, you're going into some residential housing there, so to keep it all the same.
Correct, I mean, we're already probably around 26-foot high.
Okay.
At this point with that 512, if you bumped it up to six, it's, it's going to be really up there.
Okay. Okay.
One question. Is the perimeter fencing, is that going to be both on, on just the northwest and south side to the property?
Correct. On the three sides, north, south, and west, because we have the landscape and buffer on the east side.
Is there going to be a sidewalk required there by the fencing? You're going to have a long fence.
There will be a sidewalk required on Kaywood Drive, and there will be a sidewalk required on Eileen Lane in the right-of-way. Public sidewalk within the right-of-way.
Dean, was this considered a rezoning? Were people notified within a 200 feet around it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, one of the things that, that Mr. Byquist did, partially at my suggestion and partially from experience we had over on Red Hawk with a, a similar proposal, was that Mr. Byquist had a neighborhood meeting where he invited neighbors within 200 feet to come to a presentation at one of the local motels and just get information about this project before they got letters from the, the city. So I think that certainly helped. It's often better if the neighbors hear from the developer first before they get the letter from the city, because then that allows for questions and answers and dialogue. And that, that, that's what occurred here, and, and that's why I would account for the small turnout, is that everybody was invited and had a chance to learn about the project early on.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Simson?
Yeah, well, the common driveway, what's the material that that driveway is going to be constructed from?
Concrete.
Concrete?
Yes.
And I could probably read it, but it's easier if you tell me the width.
I think we measured it at 20 feet.
Is that standard for two-lane?
It is the minimum for two-lane, and some, some of our commercial driveways would be more in the neighborhood of 24 to 25 feet. Say at a restaurant, a lot of, a lot of those put their two-way driveways at, at 24, 25 feet, but 20 feet is...
We're going to talk to 55-year-old and older.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. 20, 20 feet is sufficient for two-way, but it, it's about the minimum.
There's no curbing to prevent somebody from just pulling over onto the landscaping, then?
On, on the east side?
Yeah, the east side.
Well, yes, yes, there's going to be no curbing on the east side because that property line on the east side has to drain down into that driveway and on out.
Yeah.
Because we're using that, that driveway more or less as a drainage ribbon. And that property, the line goes 15 foot east of that driveway, yeah?
The, the buffer strip between the paving and the east property line is a minimum width of 15 feet, so that, that will be planted with trees and shrubs there to form a natural buffer between this and the houses to the east. But I think what Mr. Simson's is referring to is that some of the runoff from this property to the east will come through here and get to the driveway. If you put a curb here, that would obstruct, obstruct that from getting there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open this to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to address this application? If being none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the, to the commission, commissioners, so you agree with the staff recommendations and further comment or motion on this item.
I have one question, I guess, regarding the outlet of that common driveway. I'm assuming that we don't want any more curb cuts on Schilling?
Yes, there are no curb cuts allowed on Schilling. And so if you, if you approve this plan, that's where the driveway will be, and that's the only driveway they will have unless they come back to you and ask for an alternate plan.
And I assume that the block seven, Lot 21, is that, is that lot constructed at this time? Excuse me, just directly north of where we're at.
Do you want to go to the aerial photo, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's a house built up.
Okay.
Stand by, this 2601, South Ohio.
Right.
Yes, there is a house there.
Okay. And they're aware that they're going to have a driveway directly across from the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Their driveway opens up on Kaywood, doesn't it? Or does it?
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a house on, on the corner.
The driveway will probably be...
And they, and they came to the meeting, but their, their driveway, let me think here. Their driveway actually opens...
I wasn't concerned about where their driveway was. I was just thinking about me looking out what would be the front of my house and looking down an alley.
This, this house here will be looking basically down the parking area, and there will be headlights coming out of here for those movements. But the, the site plan and vicinity map was sent to the neighbors across the street.
A similar question. I'm having trouble visualizing the south end of this tract. If my memory serves, there, there's the 10-foot wide public multipath going along Schilling, and the site plan doesn't really show the sidewalk here connecting into that, or else I'm not able to read this generalized site plan. Is that, am I correct that this should have as, the, the Kaywood sidewalk should connect to the, to the Schilling multipurpose sidewalk?
Well, what, what you cannot see here is if, if there's sidewalks around the edge of the building for connectivity, this right here, this line, that is the right-of-way for Kaywood Drive. There will be a public sidewalk constructed right here. That will be a, a public sidewalk.
Okay.
And that will tie into the 10-foot hike bike path.
Okay.
But these sidewalks are an internal for access and circulation. This is the right-of-way line, and there will be a si, a public sidewalk constructed one foot outside the property line along Kaywood Drive and Eileen Lane.
But are the present developers responsible for that, then?
That would be part of the building permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other remarks, gentlemen? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve CU 12-8 along with the recommendations from city staff one through five.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item carries. We'll move on to other matters.
Our next scheduled meeting would be New Year's Day, and we know there's nobody interested in having a meeting that day, so there is no meeting on the first, but there will be a meeting on the 15th of January. That will be your next meeting, and we appreciate all your, your time and attention you put in in, in 2012, and we do have some refreshments for the commission in the room next door if you'd like to grab something before you head out.
Thank you very much.
I have, I have one question in other, in the other matter section. And either, Stan, you could answer this or be either one, but, or anybody who knows. But what's the total acreage on Quail Meadows?
A total, total of the entire subdivision?
Yeah.
It's slightly under 80 acres.
Okay.
If you include the undeveloped commercial area which fronts on Ohio, if you go, go from Ohio over to the railroad tracks and Schilling north, it's about 76 acres. It's just, just under 80.
Okay. And is there a plan to use for, and I may have missed this, and if so, I plead my ignorance, but for Lot 1, Block 9, which is in that corner, is there any plan to use for that?
The, and I don't know if you can still dial that up. When I, when I walked through, that Lot 1, Block 9 does not exist anymore. It was absorbed by the corner lot at, at Ohio and Schilling. And so there's, there's two, two commercial lots up front on Ohio. The north one is for neighborhood commercial uses, and the one on the corner is Zone C5 for more intense service commercial-type uses. So if somebody wanted to put in a neighborhood supermarket or a neighborhood convenience store or...
All right.
Something like that, it could be built on the Schilling, Ohio corner. But that Lot 9, or Block 9, Lot 1 there was absorbed into the corner lot.
Okay.
As, as part of that. So the frontage on Ohio is commercial, all the rest is residential, and the total acreage is about 76 acres.
Okay. Well, I guess I just have a comment, and this really may or may not reflect on, on this or any development, but I noticed that one of the provisions was that there could be, in lieu of a park in any development, I didn't know whether it was a limited number of, an acreage designation for that, that you could pay a fee and then the developer would not have to put a park in. And when I look at Quail Meadows Estate, I'm thinking it would really be nice to have a park right smack in the middle of that, which obviously did not happen. But it seems to me that particularly as far away from the other parks as this is, I know it says Jerry Ivy is close by, but I think it would behoove the city to look more carefully at making sure that parks were established in upcoming divisions, subdivisions.
And, and there is a neighborhood park plan, and an example of that is over there at, at Golden Eagle and Wildcat Circle as part of that plat. There was a park dedicated up next to the levee there, but the reason for that is that we, we could point to the park, neighborhood park plan, which called for a park, for, for better or worse, or, or weakness or strength, there was nothing in the neighborhood park plan that, that identified an area here for a future park. But as, as the city moves towards the southeast and, and those things continue, what happens is the money goes into a pool. There's a pool of money built up.
Right.
And that money is either used to acquire parkland or to make enhancements to Jerry Ivy Park or other things. But the, the, the city is divided up into zones, and where that money is collected is where it has to be spent. So the alternative is that you could have areas where money is pooled sufficiently where the city could go out and buy land for a park.
So are there any existing plans on the part of the city for parks near Quail Meadows in that region?
There was not any identified at, at that time, and the, the plan as, as it stands now, I think it, it shows something on the other side of Ohio around, potentially around the Knox Sand Pit or the, the stone, the sand pit areas, but there is no, there was no area identified around Quail Meadows for a neighborhood park.
Okay.
Leave that up to the county to build a park across the street. Could happen.
A little bit south.
Deferral of responsibility, that sounds good to me.
Right. Everybody has the land.
Yes, that's true.
A good holiday to everybody.
Feel free to grab a, feel free to grab a snack as you...